Would all committee members that are present, please indicate so in roll call. Mrs. Collieri?
Present.
Mr. Dial?
Present.
Mr. Kearney?
Present.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Present.
I am present, Craig McLowan, so all committee members are present as of 6:02 PM. This meeting is being conducted in a hybrid in-person virtual format, so please feel free to participate. No one is here in the audience tonight, but please feel free to participate using the, utilizing the Q and A feature on Zoom. And one of us will be monitoring that. And if we do not get to your question immediately, fear not, we will see it and we will address it. So with that said, we'll move on to the first order of business, which is public comment. This is your first meeting. I will note that public comment is for points of discussion or comments or questions that are not related to an item that is already on the agenda. If you have a question or comment or discussion point related to something that's on the agenda, just wait until we get there and we will take your comment then. So which one of us is watching the Q and A feature?
I have it.
I have it too.
Amongst others.
All right. This is great. Checks and balances.
I'm very willing to let go of that responsibility.
Yes.
Well, who knows when this, let's, let's both do it because one of it with bad luck and could die.
You got it.
We'll just give everyone a few seconds here to type their public comment if they have any. Just remember, if you are commenting, as if you would, or excuse me, as you would if you were here, just note your name, your full name and address, please.
I'll just sit right up here.
I'll call you up. No, sit down. Okay.
Dial, do you see anything?
No comments.
All right. Let's move on to the next agenda item, which is our superintendent's report. At this time, I would turn the meeting over to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you very much. Well, first of all, exciting news. We have our Super Bowl happening right now where Cohasset is playing Wakona out at Gillette. It's a very close game. Right now it is seven to six, and I believe just at the end of the first period, seven to six Cohasset. So that's, that's good. Good news. Looks like, looks to be a very close game, and I guess we have a huge contingent of Cohasset folks there. So it's very exciting, excited for the, for the boys and for Cohasset. So I'll keep you updated as we go. I'll, I promise I'll try to stay focused on the actual meeting, but I know I'll be getting updates as we go through it. So I do not have a student representative today, although Mrs. Farrell is.
I guess I'm it.
Because of course they all wanted to go to the game, and I completely understand that. It's a, it's a very rare occasion when we're able to go. I believe from what I understand history that we've gone to Gillette as a, a Super Bowl bound team, twice previously, winning once. So this is our third time, and you know, we were very proud of the, of the team, win, lose, I guess they can't draw, I don't think they can tie, I think they'll, they'll lose. Sort of overtime, but it's possible. So I'll keep you updated on that. So by way of update, I do have Dr. Skollins joining us. So I'm going to turn it over. Dr. Skollins comes to us from a conference. So Dr. Skollins, if you, and you're on muted, if you just want to update a bit, I know we're, we're excited about our elementary progress report, and we have communicated some information. There's more to come. And Dr. Skollins is going to talk a little bit about that communication process and sort of a high level view of the progress report. So Dr. Skollins, take it away.
Great. Thank you so much, Dr. Sullivan. Thank you. Hi, everyone. Nice to see you from here. So I did send a letter out to families that are part of the elementary schools, but I thought it would be helpful for everyone to hear that we have revised our elementary progress report because the standards from Massachusetts were updated in 2017. So we pulled a committee together in the spring and worked over the summer to look at our current standards-based report card and look at what we needed to do to make sure that it was aligned with the new standards. And during that process, we also decided that it was important to make sure that the progress report was aligned pre-K, excuse me, kindergarten through fifth grade. So although there weren't really large changes to it, there were some changes around making sure that the categories were the same, that the, some of the standards actually look similar. There may be just one or two words that are different, or sometimes it's the same because the standard is the same. It's just as they move up through the grades, the depth from which they do their work or their learning is, is deeper. So we've worked with the teachers on the committee. There were reading specialists, math specialists, principals, classrooms, special education teachers, worked really hard to, you know, really find a way to make this a more cohesive progress report. And in addition, they took it back to their, their schools to talk about it, make sure that they could get feedback. So we feel like it's a more representative progress report. And I think the thing to remember is that a progress report is different than a report card. It is a, it's kind of that moment in time, and we're looking at the standards to see where those students are now related to the standards. The standards are for the end of the year that they will have mastery, or they may have introduction to. So the progress report is just that snapshot that shows you where the child is at that time. So you may see some fluctuations. At times, a student may be making effective progress and they're independent, but then the next trimester, you may see that that might move to more of making progress with support because it's a new concept for them. So we are very happy with it, and I know that probably some people have some questions about it. So there's a webinar next Tuesday at 10:30, and that will be recorded also because I know that it's difficult for everyone to make those. So I'll be available for that time. I'll do a brief presentation and then answer questions, and then we'll post it up on the website so that anybody who couldn't attend will be able to view it. And then they can always reach out to me, the principals or teachers, if they have questions.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Dr. Skollins. I don't know, school committee, if you have any questions regarding that. Obviously, there's more information to come and more by way of presentation, as Dr. Skollins informed us.
And anyone can go to my web, go to the webpage and go under curriculum and instruction, and you can see that the sample templates are there. So anyone can look at those and get a picture of what might be coming down the pike when your child's progress report comes home for first grade through fifth grade, the end of next week, but then kindergarten will be in January because they're on semesters.
You know, today we do have, tonight we do have our presentation of our improvement plans at the elementary, and you will see work around the progress report referenced in some, of course, because it's the standards we're trying to address and standards which are marked on the progress report. So that's exciting. Thanks. So thank you, Dr. Skollins.
Let me make sure no one has any questions for Dr. Skollins. Mrs. Collieri, anything?
No. Thank you, Dr. Skollins.
Mr. Dial?
Oh, thank you. This is, this is great sort of communication that we like to get here. So thank you very much.
Mr. Kearney?
Yeah, I just say proactive. I love it.
Thank you.
Mrs. St. Ange?
I echo everyone's sentiments. Proactive, transparent, responsive to current standards. It's good stuff.
Yes. Thank you, Dr. Skollins. That little bit of tangible progress that we've been promising, not only in terms of assessments, but overall district improvement. So thank you so much.
So I will let Dr. Skollins go because I know you're at a conference and probably have to get dinner. Imagine? So I will allow you to do that. Thank you for, for stuff.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night. Bye.
Okay. So I am now going to just share.
I would be too.
You are a gentleman. Sure you can see. Even when you're wearing your Rachel. You want, anybody watching on Zoom, can you see my screen?
I just see us.
Yeah. Try that again.
Hold on one minute, Ms. Baudel. We're just trying to work out some technological issues.
No problem.
There we are.
Just a quick couple of, well, just don't look. I just wanted to talk about a few exciting events we've had since we've last met. First of all, the night after our previous school, our last school committee meeting, neglected to talk about this, although I was very excited to attend it, was our National Honor Society induction, our Joseph Osgood chapter of the National Honor Society. And we were very proud to welcome 58 new members into fraternity. So it was, it was an excellent event, very well done, very well attended. We had former teacher Al Galata, who was very inspiring, came, did the keynote, wonderful speech from Principal Scott, but the, the real show were the students and the way that they welcomed each other and talked about, really very genuinely and authentically glowingly about their friends or even just their, their people that they had met recently but got to know. And inducting them into the Honor Society was, was just wonderful to see. So it's a really great event. Kudos to Mr. Sean Turner, who is the National Honor Society advisor, Principal Scott, and that's their whole team and everyone that helped put that together. Really first class, well done. And really, I mean, this is also a cumulative effort. I mean, we have Principal Farrell here, and that's where all of these students started. And they've continued to show scholarship through Deer Hill to the middle school and now really achieving at the high school. So they're off to wonderful things, and I was very proud in that. Speaking of being very proud, this is our girls soccer team, who a couple, a couple of weekends ago fought valiantly against, what is it, Hamilton-Whitam High School, just falling short in, in overtime, but they should be extremely proud as we're all very proud of them. And I just have the, the girls soccer picture up, but really, the whole fall sports season was wonderful and commendable. Every team achieved. We had members of our cross-country team going to states, Ben Ford running well for the boys, the girls team running well. We had our soccer team going to the quarterfinals, boys soccer, of course, our girls soccer team lost to the finals. Our cheerleading squad went on and did very well in, in state competition. And it was just a very field hockey getting to the quarterfinals. I'm leaving, leaving someone out, I guess.
Middle school, cross-country.
Well, of course, they have a middle school, cross-country, they're, they're one of those as well. But just, just very proud of our efforts from our girls, and it was a hard loss, but you served Cohasset proud. Very, very proud of you.
I attended a number of these games with my daughter, the girls soccer games, and they, that team was actually a really good group of role models for girls and, and actually young boys too. They all were, we had a, Ms. St. Ange was actually there as well. We greeted them and cheered them on as they were boarding their coach bus that, that Athletic Director Rotandi procured for them. And they, instead of a school bus, they, they were expecting to see a school bus, and they came around the corner and it was this fancy coach, and they, they really got excited about that. But it was, it was also equally cool to see the little kids look up to the big kids as they drove off in the bus. So, you know, the girls should really be commended. I'm sure that they were really disappointed, but focusing on the fact that they were there at all, and that's pretty special, and what they've done off the field as well.
Absolutely.
A round of applause for them, for sure, yeah.
A lot of applause, and I have to thank all of our coaches too. Our coaches would not, you know, they certainly want the students spotlighted, they shy away from this attention, but they did a great job. And Athletic Director Rotandi, I mean, clearly running a first-class organization here. This is, these are our boys who are right now playing, and I don't have any new updates, but I will provide it for you. I guess it's a very, very close game.
We're up by another touchdown.
Another touchdown?
Yep.
Excellent. Okay. So is it 14 to 6?
Yes.
14 to 6? All right. So I was able to attend this event, which, for a little while, which is wonderful, at Gillette. When the, the Super Bowl is held in Gillette, they have a breakfast for athletes and coaches. And this was a picture I took of our cheerleader group and our cheerleader coach, and then our football coaching captains. And you can see how happy they are. It was, I was just as happy, honestly. Right on the field, wonderful event. And if you recognize that is, I believe, Fox 25 Butch Stern? Yeah, he interviewed, he interviewed both of our captains. So see, I kind of shot this. It's our girls cheerleading captains, and then they, know with all the fanfare, the congratulations. And here's some actual footage from today, what's going on right now as we speak. You have, that, I believe was the first touchdown, and then this was sent to me, just as, you can see the Cohasset hat proudly in the middle there. So I'm really happy to see that we're representing quite well. So I, you know, I'm excited for that. And speaking of being excited, really excited for this, we have Mamma Mia, which obviously the music of ABBA, which I'm sure everyone loves, we're scared of that. But Mamma Mia is a wonderful musical, and our high school group is putting it on on December 3rd, it's Friday, which I'll be going to, Saturday, December 4th, and Sunday, December 5th. So you can get your tickets at the auditorium. They're $10 at the door. Please come out and support our kids. It's wonderful to see the arts and drama alive and well again and happening in full force. So just some things that I wanted to highlight. I also did promise I would talk about our attestation. As everyone knows by now, we have made the 80% at our middle high school, the combined building. And I sent last week the very, well, it was the middle of the week, but it was the end of our week last week, that we had reached the 80%. And then I received information on Tuesday that Desi had approved us when we are operationally ready. So we will be in accordance with the vote from school committee on November 17th. We will be allowing students and staff who are vaccinated in the high school to, to remove their masks starting on Monday. So that's very exciting with that. Comes with a lot of responsibility, and, you know, we're, but we're very hopeful with that happening. And I think it's a, it's a nice tribute to where we are as a community that we're able to do this. There aren't a lot of schools doing it. So, you know, we're, we're very optimistic that we're able to provide that for our kids, and I think it's going to make for a better learning experience for our high school students. Keep in mind that on January 1st, we're going to be watching things, but on January 1st, the voted plan is to allow our middle school students, who by that time will have had the opportunity to, all of them, to be fully vaccinated, should their families wish them today. That will be a, a chance for them to, to lift a mask if they are vaccinated. So we have had a bit of an uptick at the elementary level, and I want to make sure that folks understand that. Not very shocking to me. It kind of along the line of what we had last year. We haven't had any new cases at the high school, but we have had a few at the Osgood and a few at Deer Hill, and to a lesser extent at the middle school coming after break. The week before break was rather quiet, but that did uptick, and I'm hoping it, it seems to be ebbing a little bit as of moving this week, but just want everyone to, to be aware of that. I did want to go over the attestation numbers because I did promise I would. We basically have the whole staff has attested now. There are three that aren't on here, I believe. I didn't get the numbers. They're, they're not classroom teachers, there's some extenuating circumstances around those space, so you'll see that. So I feel good that everyone has attested, one way or the other, and thank you, CTA for providing that, and the teachers and all staff for providing that important attestation. But it gives you a sense of where we are. So you can see at the high school, our student vaccination percentage is very high. It's 88%. And again, this was as of the 23rd, or it could be even a little higher as I report. The staff attestation, we know that we have 91.75, almost 92%, indicating they're vaccinated. And we have a very low, low amount, six out of 97, who have attested they're not. And again, the two are not classroom teachers, there's extenuating circumstances around that, but two we don't have reports from yet. And you can see the total vaccination percentage for just the high school is 88.29%. Of course, our middle school is going to be lower because we have less students who are able to have had vaccination because there's sixth graders there who are, a lot of them still under 12. They're now having the opportunity to be vaccinated, but of course, they haven't had, well, it's possible, but they haven't had two doses in two weeks past the two doses to actually be fully vaccinated. Right now, we stand at a 67% student vaccination percentage. So if you think about that with the amount of students who aren't really eligible for full vaccines, and most of that's pretty good. And you can see our staff totally attested, and we're at almost 94% saying that they are vaccinated, and only three are saying that they are not vaccinated. So that brings our, our numbers up as a total staff and students to almost 71%. And then if you look at all of it together, we hit, it's like 80.97%, so we hit the 81%. And I was able to, you know, put that forward as our, as our number. At Deer Hill, you know, again, this is just staff at this point, but you can see we are 61 of 63 staff at Deer Hill are vaccinated, so it was 97%. And then at the Osgood, we have, it's even a little bit higher, 97%. So these are, these are the numbers that I had expected were the, were, you know, in fact, the numbers, and they are. So that's good, good to see. So that's that. I just wanted to, just by way of update, make sure I, I provided that for you. I don't know if the committee has any questions regarding that, but I'd be, I'd be willing to talk about it. I did send some, I thought, pretty comprehensive messaging around two things this week. If, if you remember, I sent one about expectations for asynchronous and synchronous learning that, that went out on Monday, and what families can expect if they do have to quarantine from exposure, or if, if one of their, their children does have COVID, what they can expect for their synchronous opportunities and their asynchronous opportunities. And then I sent a, a note about the actual high school and what would be the conditions around them wearing masks. There are certainly some, some, some places where they'll need to wear masks on the bus, for example, where that's a federal mandate. In our learning commons, which is shared with our middle school, in our nurses' offices, and then the, we'll follow the MIA guidelines for it. We talked a little bit about, I mentioned, visitors, and we're going to watch that through January 15th anyway, and kind of get a determination on it.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Mrs. Collieri, you have any questions?
I do. I think this all looks very encouraging. I think, I'm, anyway, my question is whether there would be any circumstance, and this is not a leading question by any means, I was just wondering if there would be any circumstance where we would have to reevaluate this. Is Desi telling us that this is indefinitely, as long as you have this vaccination statistic, that you will be able to have mask-less vaccinated people?
No, actually, Desi has made it very clear that they deserve the right to make a change in their approval of vaccinated individuals removing masks at the middle or high school based on local and state data.
Okay.
So very much, we're still governed by Desi, and they could, they could turn around and, and make a determination that we have to pull the brakes up for a couple of reasons. And of course, as local authorities, the school committee and the Board of Health always has that, that opportunity.
Got it.
And it does give me an opportunity also to make it clear to everyone that people can still wear masks, and they, they really should if it makes them feel more comfortable, even if they're vaccinated. I mean, obviously, the unvaccinated do have to wear masks, but those who are vaccinated absolutely can wear masks. And wearing a mask should never necessarily be a sign of one's vaccination status. We should feel very free to, to wear masks. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that, that they can feel free to do that, and we're very supportive of that.
And one other question, I, because I can't remember, we've had so many conversations, so many meetings about the specific process. Will you get data when we come to the elementary school part of the decision-making process? Will you get data from another source, or will you ask for attestation from students' parents?
So we're, we're able to get data through our MIIS.
Right.
But, but right now, we would be asking for the same type of attestation process for our students as they become vaccinated. And then, you know, obviously, we have our staff. So I don't know, I mean, right now, it's sort of a set rule that if you hit the 80%, then you have the ability to apply for the answer of having students and staff who are vaccinated, remove masks. So right now, that's the plan. It may change. You know, remember that the masks mandate is extended through January 15th, and that means if you don't hit the 80%, then you, everyone has to be masked, everyone has to be masked in that, in a building through January. We'll just have to wait and see what the plan is as more and more students at the elementary become vaccinated, what Desi allows us to do. I, I just don't know.
Okay.
But right now, the plan is just same course we, we had with our, our middle and high school students in terms of collecting attestations and using MIIS and then any other attestation information we have.
So we should send in, I guess I'm confused by that answer. If our children are vaccinated.
If your children are vaccinated, you should contact your.
Tell the nurse.
Your nurse, absolutely. But we also have.
I thought it was just coming from the cloud or something.
No.
That's the part that confused me. Because obviously, like, you'll have data about how many kids in a certain age bracket, but what if they, I mean, how do you?
Yeah, I haven't approached that yet because, you know, clearly, although the first wave of them are getting their second shot now, right away, but then there's two weeks. So yes, you should always tell your school nurse if your child is vaccinated. As we get closer, I'll, I'll make sure I got a formalized process out there for them. You're very welcome.
Any, any further questions, Mrs. Collieri?
Oh, no.
Well, thank you. Mr. Dial?
Not, not a question as much as a, a comment, maybe even a, a request. And you touched on it a little bit earlier, talking about people with masks and people who aren't vaccinated. I guess what I would say, and we, we talked about this in our last meeting, but it's, I think it's really important to emphasize to the student body and to the administration everywhere, that, you know, there are people who may, for reasons, genetic reasons, may not be able to get vaccinations and may continue to wear masks. And what I don't want is for there to be a stigma attached with that, so that there's a disincentive for people to wear the masks. So it's not so much that I'm worried about people saying, oh, you're wearing a mask, you mustn't be vaccinated. I'm worried about, and I want to make sure we don't have a, you know, we have a zero tolerance policy for people saying, you're not vaccinated, therefore you're bad. And we don't want people to, to feel like they either can't wear a mask even though they should because they're worried about the stigma. So, you know, if we can message that that's, you know, that it's okay if someone's not vaccinated and they're wearing masks, and that that shouldn't be something that, you know, people, you know, stigmatize people for, and that helps because I worry about people getting worried that they're not vaccinated and they shouldn't wear a mask because they're worried about, you know, being ostracized or something.
I, I personally couldn't agree with you more, and I know Principal Scott feels the exact same way because I already have seen his draft, that he sent out to his staff in preparation for Monday morning, when he'll extend his homeroom to have announcements around it. He's going to have each of them, each of the teachers read the message, which emphasizes exactly what you just said.
Perfect.
Exactly. Because that's, you know, we, we want a, a hundred percent, we want people doing what they're supposed to be doing, but we do not want anyone to stigmatize anyone within this. It's very important to us that doesn't happen. And I think the way he worded it, I thought was, was very well done. So I'm in complete support of their approach right now, and it happens to align perfectly with what he just said.
Perfect.
Almost exact.
Great. It's wonderful. That's it. I, I like the numbers, like where we're going, and I think it's a good experience for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney, any comments or questions?
No, thank you for your presentation. Also, to your point about the masks too, is they're still going to need them to go in the learning commons and.
Yes, they are.
School bus, so.
Yep.
Yeah, it's not like, they're still going to have required.
Yeah, everyone should bring a mask to school.
Right.
Because there are going to be places where you. Well, we obviously have masks available, but please bring a mask to school because there will be places and times when you do, you do need to wear a mask based on the fact that we have a shared building, and then there are some rules around nurses' offices, and of course, the bus, you could always go on the bus.
And the sports, this, this fall as well, on this winter.
Yeah, we're going to have to see. So the MIA is still kind of carving out their line on this, and we're going to have to watch that. I actually had a conversation with Athletic Director Rotandi. So I, I promise I'll update you on that, but.
As of now, you mean?
As of now, it's masks, but I know that there's, there's some movement on it.
Okay.
We'll watch that, and I promise I'll update as we go. Safety first, and then, you know, we want to make sure we give a good experience socially, emotionally for our kids second.
Kearney, is that all?
So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. St. Ange?[1743.12]
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. That actually concludes the superintendent's report, I do believe.
Well, we have.
No, it doesn't.
The other topics are, Ian, we can always be optimistic, Dr. Sullivan, but there are a few more issues here, so.
It concludes your bullet.
Good night.
Yes.
So, yeah, so I would, at this point, I would like to introduce Ms. Tanya Bodell. And Tanya, I know is here, if you just, she just turns on her camera, we can see her. There she is. And thank you, Tanya, for being here. And Tanya is the chairperson of, I believe, chairperson of our Alternative Energy Committee. So without, unless anyone else wants to add anything by way of introduction. I do have your presentation here, Tanya, so I can run through it. And you should be able to see it on your screen as I switch the pages. They can just give me a nod and I will go right through it, but.
Okay, great. Perfect.
All right, welcome, Ms. Bodell. Please.
Very good.
Yes.
Yes, so I'm chair of the Alternative Energy Committee, and we are tasked by the Select Board with finding opportunities for parts of town as well as residents in town. And we have some opportunities to share with you, some of which you're already familiar with, some of which are new. And of course, we're here just to inform and if you ask to advise and recommend. But at the end of the day, it is obviously your decision when it comes to the schools. So we're going to give you an update on some of the initiatives that we have underway and some of the opportunities that have come up. And especially as, and only as they pertain to the schools. But there are many more opportunities coming. I want to emphasize this. There are many more opportunities coming tied to the infrastructure bill that was passed at the federal level. And ARPA money, which is at the state level and is being dedicated to clean energy programs and electric vehicles and charging stations and batteries and other things like that. So we, at the Alternative Energy Committee, are monitoring these, and we will raise these opportunities as they come. So we're going to quickly talk through our student reps that we are moving forward on Electric School Bus Demonstration Project, which is an opportunity for the schools' Cohasset Core Mini Grid and the implications for the schools and solar energy arrays. All right, next. Just so you know, we have interest from the last meeting from a member of the middle school. We've reached out to them, and we are right now trying to understand what the official position or unofficial position could be. Obviously, anybody's allowed to attend our meetings as a member of the public. But it'd be nice if we could give some type of official position or nod to the students who are interested in participating. And we've also reached out to the green team. My daughter's on the green team. So we are reaching out to the green team to see if they'd like to field a representative from the high school. We're very excited about this. In general, we meet on the second Thursday of the month at seven thirty P M. But we're looking forward to working with the students on this. Next. So this is an opportunity in the course of working with some of the state agencies. N A S C E C has a $200,000 subsidy for electric school buses, a demonstration project. It was originally going to be Hopkinton. They withdrew, and we can explain why in a moment. But Cohasset has now been offered this opportunity. So what is the opportunity? The opportunity is that Cohasset would be able to lease two electric buses for three, five, or seven years at the, at the town's choice, school's choice. The five-year lease is expected to be on par with diesel buses. There would be, as part of that, the installation and operations of charging stations that would be included. And Cohasset would provide the drivers and the schedule. And this is why Hopkinton pulled out. They have a all-inclusive lease program where the third party provides the buses' maintenance and the drivers. And I understand that Cohasset, this Cohasset school system is looking to do a similar type of program as the buses come up for lease, I think, next year. So this may be a reason not to do it. On the other hand, there is, uh, this is an opportunity to get ahead of the curve, take advantage of some of the subsidized money, put your toe into the water and, and figure out if electric buses works for the town. And as part of this, get some charging stations, which could be very useful as a future rush on that equipment is going to occur with the infrastructure bill funding and the state funding. Both of those bills are very focused on electric buses and electrification of buses. The money's available, first come, first served. And, um, yeah, I just want to raise this, because I know there is movement to move forward with decisions. We can fill out a simple survey, and within a week, N L X will turn around and give us a quote for how much these buses would cost. If, if nothing else, it could provide price point for your future negotiations. But this is an opportunity to think about sooner rather than later. But we welcome your interest in this. We're happy to just keep moving through. We're stopped for discussion now. I don't want to bog things down, but your choice. And this talks about reasons to do it and reasons to pass. But I think mainly the reasons to pass are, pass are logistics and whether or not it works within the current strategy for buses. That's a reason to pass, the reasons to do it. Again, I think moving forward, you could get lower bus lease costs, allows to test it out before it becomes adopted more widely. All right, I'm about to move to another topic. So I don't know if we want to talk about the electric school buses.
I think let's just get through the entire presentation, and I'll go around the table, and the committee members can ask questions about any topic they'd like.
Perfect. Excellent. Okay, keep going. Next. Okay, solar energy arrays, these, as you know, have been on hold. You haven't heard from us on this. The school roofs continue to be the most cost-effective sites. We identified parking canopies, gave you some visuals on that. We have continued to try to find ways to make the roofs work, because it's the most cost-effective way. If you go next. Next page. This is the visual that was presented to you by Ameresco about what the carports would look like. Next. And on the economics of the roofs, you know, we are looking at whether or not a power purchase agreement, what the savings would be with that, whether the power purchase agreement with roof replacement could be economically viable. If you replace the roof in conjunction with solar, there's a twenty-six percent discount off of that. And, and the third is a brick grant where we could get seventy-five percent of the solar energy array, whether it's a carport or rooftop, paid for, that would create more savings in terms of electricity. And we've run some numbers, and there are some realistic scenarios under which that could offset not getting shared funding from the state. But we just want to let you know, there's still no clear path forward, but we are continuing to look at that. Next. So the Cohasset Mini Grid Select Board approved, moving forward with trying to look at a brick grant. Next page. This mini grid would improve power supply reliability for the downtown area in town. It would be a part that goes in a six-mile rectangle along Sawyer Street to down Elm Street and around up to Pond Street and over on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. And as you know, that would positively impact power supply for the schools, which are located on the backbone of that grid. Next. This is a map that shows where that would be. Next. And it would have broader implications for purposes of the downtown for residents and for the critical facilities, including the schools. Next. And the potential improvement would be, instead of having what, over the last five years, has been two-point-three-eight customer outage days on average, we could take it down to almost zero. And to the extent the schools are interested, we could put batteries on the sites to allow it to have almost perfect power. The backbone itself would improve the outages by fifty percent. And, and key benefit is, as you know, from the last outage, whether or not school could continue, we would hope that would be the case. Since the last outage, we lost three days of school. There's also ancillary services, things like refrigeration. My understanding is all the food had to be removed from Osgood, because the power went down. This would prevent that, keep the systems working, including the pumps that help with the sanitation facilities at the high school. And it just generally would benefit, obviously. Power is important. Next. So these are what the batteries would look like. Again, the batteries would be placed on site if the schools are interested. We're looking to get seventy-five percent of the cost of these batteries paid for by the federal government through a brick grant. The other twenty-five percent would basically pay for itself by selling services from the batteries into the grid when, when it was economic to do so, and we'd have a microgrid manager to do that. So this is, again, an opportunity. The schools would benefit. And it's part of a proposal we're submitting to the federal FEMA, the Emergency Management Agency. Okay, next. And that's what the batteries would look like, a point-five-megawatt battery or a one-point-oh-megawatt battery. Next. And timeline is, we're working, big submission is due on Monday. And, and again, it may go nowhere. We're, we're very honest about this. It may be M E M A, the Massachusetts arm, doesn't like it, doesn't submit it. Maybe we can't get the benefits up enough, although right now, we're there. So where I'm finalizing this to submit, and, you know, as it moves forward, there are lots of points at which we make go-no, go-no-go decisions with respect to getting an award of the grant, getting the grant, and where the specifics of the assets would be placed. Next. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much, Mrs. Bodell. Any committee members have any questions for Mrs. Bodell or the A C? Mr. Collier?
Thank you for this presentation. I think certainly covered a lot in a very short time, and I appreciate it. And really grateful for the work that your committee is doing. I have a question about the buses. Well, I think it's more of a question. It's a question that probably is best directed to Dr. Sullivan. So do we have, is there an opportunity to potentially do sort of like an overlapping electric bus and other third-party leasing for the district? Or is it that we would have to choose one or the other?
Well, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure. You know, I, I think really what we're looking at is some of the shortcomings of having our own bus lease as a small district with a driver shortage, not a place to really park the buses. We're looking at sort of the cost efficiency versus the flexibility that having a, a, a third party be able to transport our kids affords us. And we've run into a lot of challenges because of our limited bus fleet. You know, since I've been here, it goes all the way back to starting schools later, that whole, that whole formula. We talked about, you know, the, the inability to, we needed to add buses, and how do you add buses to the current lease? And then it's gone right to, we don't have a place to put these buses. They're like, you know, seven, seven wandering buses or nine wandering buses. And then the idea of our, we did outsource two, two buses to Local Motion, who won the bid for our, our Mecca buses. So we're really looking at that strongly now, as we're at the end of the lease. We are, obviously, we, we would love to have a scenario where we have electric buses and make that work. But I think we have some pressing needs on us in, in the areas I just mentioned. And I'm not sure, I'm not sure, I don't know enough about the offerings out there. Like, I don't know if there's an outside, but this sounds like this is, this is clearly, the idea here is that we'd have our own drivers, our own driver schedules and, and all that. And that formula is causing us some problems right now.
Well, I guess my question, though, is what I'm hearing is that this grant is two buses, right?
Correct.
So do we have the flexibility to say, we'll allocate these two buses to do this, and then we'll have the lease for the rest of our needs to do the rest of what we need?
No, I think we might run into some of the problems that Hopkinton ran into, it sounds like, with the third-party provider. I mean, we'd have to then have our own drivers for these two buses.
Right.
Third-party provider's not going to drive these buses.
Right.
So I don't know, I don't know if that would be economically feasible for us. I think it's, I, I think this is something we need to look at.
Right.
Definitely do. I mean, but I think, I think we need to look at it with this other thought as well, kind of in, in one package.
Right.
That's important to, to really decide what's best for us. And this is the year for us to do it, because it's the end of our lease. So I, you know, I thank you, Tanya, for bringing this to our way. But I do think, you know, we need to do it in the, in the same sweep as we do the other, looking at the, the outside possibilities as well. Because it's hard being a small district and having our own bus fleet, quite frankly. It's, it's much easier to have a, an outsourced fleet for a lot of different reasons when you're a very small district. Work both ways.
But what I'm hearing you say is that there may be an opportunity to apply a creative solution to this that would allow us, there may be, right?
Yeah, I would, I, I don't know enough about it.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know that Susan's doing a, a cost analysis of, of this to, to, to really be able to present first to our finance and facilities group, which is Lance and Paul. And then to, that, I'm, I'm sure that's happening, you know, from when we checked in. It's in, it's in process, so we're almost ready to do that. But creativity is always a good thing, particularly when it might solve some energy issues and, and set us up for, for a future success when, you know, this happens. So I, I wouldn't, I would never say never, but, you know, we're looking at the need for some flexibility and the need for, you know, drivers, which is a shortage, and the need for space, which is at a premium right now. So those are the three factors that are really governing our thoughts.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Collier. Mr. Dial?
Yeah, so continue on the buses. I, I love the idea of capturing opportunities to, to, to build new things. And, and figuring out, I guess, right now, though, it looked like, I guess, what, what do we need to do now? Is there, is there a timeframe on getting back to them and having a go-no-go? I guess, how long do we have to make these assessments, compare what we're doing, and fit that into our overall strategic plan?
Yes, so there's a survey that we have provided to Ms. Owen, and it includes questions, whether it's part of the buses or all of the buses, you know, how many miles, things like that. And then, once we return that to N L X, they would give us a quote within a week. So they can tell us what would a three-year lease cost, a five-year lease, a seven-year lease. Again, it's subsidized. I think the expectation is, of course, who knows? But the expectation is that the five-year would be on par with the diesel buses. We wouldn't know until we got the quote back. But we could get that back within a week of filling out the survey.
But is there, is there a timeframe? Because as, as we heard Dr. Sullivan mention, that there's other, other factors about how we're considering what we're going to do. Also, the real estate issue is, is one that we'll have to figure out. Right now, we've got our wandering buses, and this would obviously require us to build dedicated charging stations. So we need to find a place for that to happen. Plus, as we'll talk about later on, facilities committee, we don't, we don't know what the schools are going to look like in five years. So, you know, a lot of things to consider. I think we should really seriously consider that. But I, I just want to make sure there's not like a deadline, like they need to hear by January fifteenth, or else the opportunity passes.
There's no set deadline, and just so you know, the buses are a seven-to-nine-month requirement to be built. So they wouldn't be able to start until the next school year anyway. But, you know, they obviously are trying to find their host community. They raised it with us. If we drag our feet too long, they're just going to go to some, someone else. So I would say the sooner we could fill out the survey, there's no obligation. Fill out the survey, send it back to them, get a quote, and then, you know, find out from them what the timing is on getting back to them. But because of the seven-to-nine-month bus window, you know, obviously, we can work backwards and say they probably do need to know by January.
I would recommend we possibly do a creative strategy and timeline in our upcoming facilities committee.
But if, but if you ask right now, if, or the option right now, just complete the survey, give them information, so they can give us information about what a quote would look like? I'd say we proceed with that. That sounds, you know, that optionality is, 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 is great. So if it's no obligation, and we just get more information on what it would cost, we'd bring any of that anyway to help as an input into our strategic planning. So that's, that's excellent.
Thank you. Yeah, we can, we can absolutely move in that direction. I just think we're at the point now where we, we, the timeline needs to be set, so we can make sure we have a solution.
And this also might be a good impetus for us to continue, you know, focus on that issue, which we haven't focused on.
No, and it's, you know, there's been a lot of different things to focus on, but this is a good time to do it, really. So, timing is good.
And then, I'm sorry, another question. You, you, Tanya, by the way, come in on your presentation. You did get a lot of stuff in very efficiently. That's fantastic, a fantastic skill. So school roofs, is there a decision point for this committee? Is this an F Y I for us? Do you need any information from us or administration? I guess what's, what can we do to help out?
Yeah, yeah. So I think on that one, you know, again, as part of the microgrid, if we could get seventy-five percent of the rooftop solar paid for, that creates more savings that could offset a situation with the state where we wouldn't get cost sharing. That, that is what we are, the other ones are just, we're having difficulty with the state. Right now, it looks like they're not going to cost share on the roof replacement until twenty-twenty-five to twenty-twenty-eight. They keep pushing the ball off. It used to be a twenty-year roof, now it's a twenty-five-year roof, even a thirty-year roof. So we've gone to the state, we've been monitoring to try to see if we can hasten it. This year was a no-go. We, we would like to, again, with your permission, we would like to continue. we would like to continue to explore with the state, if we could get 26% of it paid for by the I T C, would you let Cohasset replace the roofs early and fund the gap, right? And what they otherwise would have funded less than 26%. That way we can replace the roofs early, we could be made whole. There's a time value of money cost, but the maintenance, right, goes down. So I think there's just, you know, we're, this is an issue that spans multiple committees. We're trying to get as much information collected. As long as you're still interested, you'd like us to do that, we can keep collecting and come back to you with a decision point when we have the information to put something viable on the table. So it's just informational, but is this something you'd like us to continue pursuing and learning what the state might or might not want to be doing?
Well, personally, I have solar on my home. It works great. I haven't paid a power bill in a long time. So that's fantastic. The only question mark is middle high school. As you know, we've got the facilities committee now. I think there's coming up in the next town meeting to do a feasibility study on what to do about that facility. So does that, does the, taking that middle high school as a question mark on the rooftop solar change the economics of this at all and make it any less attractive?
No, we've taken that off the table because of your advice. So the only schools we're looking at right now are Deer Hill and Osgood.
Great. Fantastic. And then I could, I guess the same question, I'm sorry, I just, this is, I'm really interested in all this stuff. On the mini-grid, is there a decision point for us now? Anything you need from us to, to look at that? Obviously, we want to, we love the idea of keeping our schools open as, as much as possible.
Right. The answer is no, unless there's a, no way are we going to put a battery on campus. Like, and, and even then, we don't need to know that now because we can move ahead. We've, we've sort of identified where the batteries would go to give perfect power to the schools. That seems a logical place. But if for some reason, there's concern about batteries on the campus or in the woods behind Deer Hill and Osgood, you know, we can find other places in town. But it obviously adversely impacts the benefit of the grid to the schools if we do that. So I, I think just cogitate on it. Right now, we don't need a decision point. We can move forward with the proposal as it is, refine it if, in December before it gets submitted to FEMA at the end of January. But I wanted to let you be aware, the schools are involved. There's a benefit. But the benefit comes with the hosting capacity with respect to the batteries. But there's benefit even without that.
Last, last question. This is from Ms. Colery. Ms. Sanchez, are you at the alternative energy committee with the school liaison?
I am the liaison, yeah.
Okay, perfect. So
So I'm at each meeting and get updates as they come.
Perfect. Great. Thank you for all this work and your presentation and all this information. This is fantastic.
All right. Thank you. We appreciate being able to present and help the schools.
Sorry.
Tanya, you're up.
Yeah, first, I, I, I want to echo, thank you for all your hard work and thank you, Lydia, as well. You know, when we first saw this, it's just, oh, we're going to put the room, we, we all thought that putting the solar panels on a roof that needed to be replaced was crazy. And you guys came back and, and you came up with a, a good plan to move forward. I thought you got the clear understanding that we didn't want to do the carport. So I think you guys really kind of heard us and I, and I appreciate that. That said, I'd also like to, to point out, I think that's a great idea to get the kids involved in this because it's a, not only a great thing for the community, but it's a learning tool, achievement, a learning moment. And I also, as far as the buses go, I, I liked what Mrs. Colery was saying as far as trying to, trying to, look, if we're going to, why don't we try it? I mean, I'd be, if we get two buses and we have to, if we have to use them for sports or, you know, I, I just think it's a, it's a golden opportunity to try, try to be ahead of the curve. And if we're, we, we should definitely grasp that opportunity. I would say this though, like if, if we're going to present the lease on the 357 year, and we're just talking about two buses here. I'd also like to know like the options, like the 360 cameras and some of the things that the other buses have. Because now we have the 180 cameras, which I wasn't really happy with last time we leased the buses. I'd like to do the 360 cameras. We want to talk about seatbelts. So when you do this, could you bring back like, this is the latest of technology that we can identify where the buses are? Because I'm sure they're, if they're what they are. The other thing is, is this is going to sound crazy, but they don't really make any noise. So I'm concerned about that because I owned an electric car and they didn't make any noise. So it's kind of like, the kid's got to know, like, they're not going to hear the bus. Like, it's, I don't know if that's a concern. And the other thing is, is the power, my, like, my energy in my car wouldn't go up the driveway. That's why I kind of got rid of. So those are, it couldn't get up the driveway. I mean, I loved it.
It's snow and ice.
It's snow and ice. Yeah, I couldn't get up the driveway. I was disappointed. So I bought a Ford truck and it's
Now he has a 350.
Yeah. I just want to say I'm all on and I think this is great. I think this is great. I think that the, if we have to use it, like you were saying earlier, as, as, as part of our caveat of, of transportation, I think we should go for it. And I, I do like the fact that you did listen to us as far as the roofs. And I love the fact that we could have a generator. So as soon as possible, that would be great. I think Sullivan would like that.
Yes, would like to order one, please.
So it's, again, I'm excited. You know, I, I'd like to see it move forward as fast as we could as long as we talk to the middle high school because that, so I'm all, I'm on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tanya. Ms. Sanchez?
Thank you, Tanya, for preparing all of this and presenting it in such an easy to understand way for us non-alternative energy experts. I'm, I'm just, I know that I'll be at the alternative energy meetings, but I'm hoping that if, if, obviously if things progress with the brick grant, we'll have to kind of circle back and have you share information about that. So we can talk about possible next steps as it pertains to schools. I'm also excited about the idea of electric buses. I'm also wondering if, if as we're considering it, do we zoom out and think about how that could be used by the town in general? Like, could senior citizens be also taking advantage of this? Could it be a part of the Will Cup Commons? I don't know, like food delivery or field trips? I don't know. I don't know. I just feel like there are other, like, we don't need to maybe necessarily just narrow it to school use. Maybe we do have to. I don't know. But I think if we're thinking about the future and being energy forward, let's also think a little bigger picture than just getting to, you know.
Yeah, I think exploring how we can, how, how we could possibly utilize the buses.
Yeah.
Granted, there's only two of them. So I mean, there are, there, there is going to be a need for more buses.
Sure.
So how does that need coincide with these two buses, I think is the question. Number one.
Right.
And two is, you know, back to Ashley's point, can we be creative?
Yeah, I think, yeah. Yeah, I feel like this is definitely a time to be creative and,
Yeah.
you know, electric vehicles aren't that new, but electric buses.
We'll get Paul up his driveway.
Yeah.
No, actually, I'm waiting for the Ford F-150 electric truck that actually, if your house goes down, you plug it in and it lights up. I said that 10 years ago. Like, I just said, we have
Tanya has like things in her back pocket, like we can be powering our town with a bus and going and charging and we're going to be all set if we just,
And, and let me just say, the reason why the electric bus opportunity came up was because with a grant we received last year, we looked at electric buses as a means of providing mobile storage to the town, grinder pumps, other things. To the schools during outages, the bus could be used to charge the school buildings, believe it or not. They're, they're big enough.
Right.
And in looking at that, that is how our interest piqued the interest of the Mass C E C. And then they talked to N L X and said, we lost Hopkinton. I think we might have a very advanced innovative town and who might be interested in being the host for those buses. And the demonstration project with these buses is it sells ancillary services back into the power grid. And so when it's not being used by the schools or whatever other function, it is providing reliability to the broader system. And so that is the demonstration project that they're looking to do. So it's, it's more simple than our aspirations of mobile storage, but yet still very cool. And, and, and gives us, like I said, we can get ahead of the curve, which is coming. I guarantee you, within the next five years, there is a huge push for electrification of school buses.
That's awesome. Okay. Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. Is that all?
That's it from you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bodal. I, I view this as more informational at this point. Aside from the, perhaps the survey to fill out, doesn't seem like there, there are many action items for us. And I think when there will be, I'm sure you know where to find us and we'll be happy to have you back to make some decisions if you need us to.
All right. Fabulous. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And I will say goodbye now. Bye-bye.
So if I can move to the next area, as we look here, we have our elementary school improvement plans. And as is the case when a district does a new, or at least in my experience, a new strategic plan, everything aligns to it. And that includes obviously our school committee goals, our superintendent's goals, all of our leadership goals, our teacher goals, and very importantly, our school improvement plans. So thank you for your understanding that the plans that are usually set in the spring for the following year, this year, have been set in the fall. So there's a lot of action that's concurrent. And you're going to see in, in the formations of this, in both plans, you're going to see some similarities in the way they're put together. And you're going to see direct links to our strategic plan, which you've seen all the way across the board in everything we do and provide for you. I should say that Principal Sullivan from Deer Hill was unable to be here. I was the last minute thing and not able to be here. So I'm going to present her plan and then I'm going to let, yes.
May I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Can we have Principal Farrell do hers first as she may leave? Where, where Principal Sullivan isn't here anyway.
Fabulous. Yep. That's, that's fabulous. I was going to go by the agenda item, but thank you, Sharon McClellan. So I will let Principal Farrell present. She's going to just update, go kind of through the plan and update on each of the goals. And then if you'd like me to follow that immediately or you have any questions, then let Principal Farrell leave.
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's
Better. All right. Principal Farrell, take it away. And I will show your, your, hang on the screen.
And thank you for the consideration of doing this and then leaving. Thank you. I do want to begin by, Mr. McClellan, thank you very much for bringing it to my attention. If you turn to page four, we have a template that the leadership team has been sharing. And I guess I decided I was going to leave Cohasset Middle School in on page four and Deer Hill. So just so you know, I do realize those are there and I will drop those out. This is the Osgood plan. This year, we had the pleasure of having three new representatives in the community. So myself is the chairperson. Dave Intton is our school adjustment counselor. He's a staff representative. Jen McPhillips is a teacher representative. Felicia Frank is a teacher representative. Lauren Grogan, a parent representative, the three parents. I want to publicly thank them for coming, stepping up and doing this, this for the next few years. The, we also have Jenna DeBol and Andrew Nelson, both. Actually, Andrew is a new kindergarten parent. So I give him a lot of kudos for stepping right up. Right as you step in the door with a kindergarten child, you jump right in, you, you take action. And I have Craig McClellan as our school committee liaison. And again, this is a template that you're going to see through all four schools. So our nondiscrimination policy is right in the beginning. Our mission statement of the Cohasset Public Schools, in the past, this is my sixth year here. In the past, we've had our individual mission statements for the schools. We are now mission statement for the entire district, which makes it a lot easier and it makes a lot more sense. We all believe in the same mission. Public, Cohesive Public School Vision, empowering students to empower communities. This is a driving force for one of my talking points to the school council. And you'll see that a little bit later in the goals. And our core values, placing students first, continual personal growth, creating an optimum teaching and learning environment, strong school community engagement and utilizing the resources to support teaching and learning. The rest of this again is just formatted for the four schools. I would like to turn right to, we have the elements, school data in page six. As of Monday, we had 30 preschool students, 127 kindergarten students, 109 first graders, 105 second graders for a total of 371, which is higher than it's been in the last two years. It's actually 30, I think 30 students higher than when we, before we had COVID. So we are definitely growing and you can see that in the kindergarten numbers. The average class size for preschool is about 15. Kindergarten is higher because of, it's higher, but it's equal to grade two because in grade two, we have five teachers splitting those children. Where in kindergarten, we were fortunate enough, and thank you very much, school committee members and town for allowing us to hire a new kindergarten teacher. So we have six teachers. So those numbers are balanced a little bit when you look at average class size. And grade one, again, a great deal of thanks goes out to the school committee and Dr. Sullivan in the town for allowing us to add a grade one teacher. Because 18 for grade one would have been a lot higher if we only had five. And we do have a sixth first grade teacher. So that made a huge difference. And with the, if you include all the classroom teachers, the special ed teachers, the specialist and curriculum specialist, our ratio is 13 to one. As we go on, our first, Osgood's first goal, and I will just highlight this just a little bit and give you more of a, use it as more of a talking piece, but the Osgood will increase student learning in the areas of math and literacy. As Dr. Scholz has said, over the last year, we've been looking at math bridges program. We will increase by the direct results of professional development offered throughout the year in literacy and continued math professional development in year two of the math program. So this year, we, we are fortunate enough to have T L A coming in and working with us for literacy. We've done a lot of literacy work and there's a lot more to do. The professional development runs, I think it's important for parents to know, professional development runs through the day when we have early release days or if we have a full professional development day. It also runs after school and sometime during the school day. When T L A comes in and they do presentations, they actually do, maybe there'd be a talk like this here. Then we go to a teacher's classroom and the representative does, does a lesson with the children that are right there, which is a huge professional development asset because there's nothing better than having somebody from the outside come into your classroom, do a lesson with your children and show you the different ways to actually get the best from the children and give the best to the children. This year, that was definitely seen when we had the T L A representative come in. And this was her first time being in a classroom since COVID, one of the first times. So when she was discussing, oh, you can do this with letter sounds or you can do this when reading. It's a big difference when you're in the classroom, you have the mask on. So it was nice to see someone there learning with us, they're guiding us. But it, it is a huge plus when a teacher can say, oh, you know, I could probably do that in my classroom. Maybe I could. But when somebody's in your classroom showing you how to do it with your students, it makes a huge difference. The, this improvement in student learning will be evidenced by improvement in reading and math through I-ready assessments and other assessments. Through I-ready, we would like to see 15% school-wide improvement. I was speaking with Dr. Scholz the other day and she had asked, why 15%? Some, most times you put 10%. I believe, my firm belief is 15% is a good number to look at because we're looking at kindergarten students who are just learning how to read. So they've taken the I-ready assessment. We're looking at where their skills are. They're just starting their skills. So they should be able to grow a lot more. Whereas if you're looking at a fourth grade student and they're taking the I-ready exam assessment, they, they've already got a lot of skills. You're testing those skills. So there might be a little bit of improvement, but not a lot. But I really do believe that the, the professional development, the curriculum that we're using, the teachers, will be able to move the students a lot more than just the, what you'd see in other grade levels. Not because our skills are better, just because we have a lot of planning to do. And our skills are better. I will The act, oh, I'm sorry. The plan is aligned with compass point one, teaching and learning, strategic incentive, three, five and six. I know you can all read the rest of this. I think I would just want to highlight a few things. The responsible parties in the building would be myself. And the action plan, we're implementing, we have implemented I-ready benchmark assessments. It'll be three times during the school year. Support grade level teams in the area of literacy, math, professional development and implementation of the programs. Provide continued targeted and general literacy support through establishment of additional reading specialist position. We have, we were, I guess we were very blessed this year as I speak. I see how more blessed we were than I thought. We had the honor of hiring a half-time reading specialist. We have a full-time reading specialist. Now we have a half-time and the half-time reading specialist is working strictly with kindergarten. So that's huge. So that's huge. And we were, we are going to be analyzing the benchmark data and use formalized instruction to utilize the Osgood multi-tiered support system, the MTSS. If we go to target two, I'm sorry, goal two, the Osgood will continue to implement responsive classroom strategies that are focused on promoting equitable opportunities for and emotional wellness for our students. The Osgood will also explore strategies from the regular, the zones of regulation curriculum in order to support our students with recognizing, expressing their emotions. Number two is probably my second favorite goal to be working on. We've had responsive classroom at the Osgood for, 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 four years now. And the way that when, um, Dr. Sullivan came to the, um, the district, looking at responsive classroom was implemented, training the teachers. Responsive classroom is a little bit difficult as a program. We have training because they require that they train your, your staff. They don't let you do teacher leader, like, so let's say, for example, Ms. Wonka got trained, she comes back to the district and she trains all of us. They don't allow that to happen. They want to keep it pure, so they train you three days, which probably doesn't sound that difficult, but it is when you need to release an entire staff. So we're doing it in stages. The most important part of doing it in stages is we are, we have a teacher-trained leader. That does not mean she can go and train the rest of the building, but she can answer questions. She can be a support person. And this year, we're going to be using her and her skills to support us as we support the students. I know that we've talked about this several times. We're seeing a lot of more anxiety in kindergarten and first grade students than we've seen in the past for obvious reasons. And the other piece that we're seeing is, and this is where the zones of regulation comes in, a lot of students have been home for a very long time without any other communication other than their siblings. And I'm not quite sure about you, but I know that I speak with my siblings, especially when I was younger, much different than I would speak to a friend outside of school. If I wanted something, I'd go over and I'd take it. At research, you can't necessarily do that, nor should you. So the training, um, for the teachers is important to realize that the children aren't making, they're not trying to be difficult. It's just, that's what they've been doing for the last year and a half. If they wanted something in the family, they went and they got it. If it was lunchtime and they wanted to get up from the table and go over and get something, that's what they did. So these rules that have been embedded for our students, this time around, they're not embedded as well. And it has nothing to do with any training that the teachers have or what was different in the past. It's just the students have been home for a long time. So we're looking at how can we use the responsive classroom, morning meeting, talking about things. And for those of you that don't know, the zones of regulation are, um, blue, blue, yellow, green, red. And if you're blue, that, then you might be feeling sad about something. If you're green, you're quite happy. And it's easy to identify a feeling as an adult, but as a student or a young child, it's hard to tell, why do I feel this way? Why am I not happy? Thank you. Why am I not happy? Is it because somebody said something or did something? So zone of regulations gives you the opportunity to take a moment, realize what you're feeling and then act or react. One of the things that you can do in the zones of regulation, if you're not happy or you're stressed, is, um, go for a walk around the classroom, read a book. We all see these gadgets or fidgets that are everywhere. So we want to make sure that our students have these skills because they haven't come to us this year with these skills. And the next, um, goal that I think this one's my favorite so far. So this goal here, goal three, the Osgood will locate and identify three new partnerships within the school district and community. These partnerships will enhance and support communication among all stakeholders and create a larger learning community for the students to be an active part in. As you all know, the communication is two-way, parents to school, school to parents. I feel as if we've been working on the parent communication for a while and we will continue to, family communication for a while and we'll continue to do that. One of the things that I, in talking to the school council and talking to the staff, we don't have a strong connection to the community. We do with Harley Hill and Farmer John. We don't have a strong connection. Safe Harbor does a lot for us, but our students are so young that we don't have that connection to the high school, the middle school, and possibly even Deer Hill would have. So what we want to do is make strong connections within the community so people know we're here. And so our students know there are other places in the community that they can help out and go to. So the, um, Cohasset High School, I've been working with, um, Principal Scott and we've been making some connections. We had a connection with the book fair, their volunteers came over and helped us with the book fair. We have a, um, holiday concert that the high school student, all students come in over and perform for us. Some of the newer things that I'd like to do at the high school is asking the high school students to come down and work with some of our elementary students. Read booths. And a lot of the students, the element, um, the high school students are babysitters or they know these, our, our students. I'd like to continue those connections. And a little bit selfish on my behalf is I'd like to make the connection for the staff between the Osgood and the high school. And Dr. Sullivan, thank you, you started, one of your, um, your comments before was very meaningful to me that it is fantastic that the high school goes to the Super Bowl. It's fantastic that they represent the town of Cohasset everywhere. I like the fact that you mentioned that it starts somewhere. They start, um, their academic career, their, their sports career, their theatrical career at a young age and then it grows. So I wanted, I'd like to make a connection between the staff at the Osgood and the staff at the high school, just so they can see, we're all for the same, we're all here for the children. They just get to see the children when they're larger and we get to see them when they're smaller. And you have no idea how many times either myself, my staff will cringe when somebody says, oh my gosh, that's so cute, what a cute bulletin board. You may realize that, um, a cute bulletin board may take blood, sweat and tears and at least 15 hours worth of work to get that there. And it is cute, but it's a lot of work. And that work and the, the pride that the teachers and the students have, I'd like to see that on both ends of high school and the Osgood. So that's that connection. I reached out, not for, uh, not for a roommate, for myself, but I reached out to Sunrise Nursing Home. And I do ask them if we can make a connection with them. In districts that I've worked in before, usually you make a connection with the nursing home because you look at your, your, um, your taxes. You look at that time of year when you're voting for things, who do you look towards? You look towards your, your elderly, you look to the people who have children in schools and you look to newcomers that come to town. So in most towns, they make sure they include the, the elderly or the senior citizens because they want them to school, see where their money's going in the school. That's not necessarily my goal right now. My goal is I'd like to see with the staff, we want to make a connection with the nursing home in town. Our littlest students can make a huge difference in their lives, sending them a card, sending them a care package, getting to know them. It would be fantastic if next year, when we don't have to wear these, um, and we have performances, you know, Osgood, um, holiday stroll that we're going to start, if they could come and see that, that to me is a huge connection and it makes you part of the community. I was very fortunate that my parents both were very active in my children's lives and they are strong pieces of who they are. I forget sometimes that not everybody has specific family members. Some people don't have, um, you know, strong family members in their home, but when they can see them in other places, I think that makes a huge difference. And then the last, um, measure that we're, successful measure that we're trying to start right now is, we, in the past, we've always done choice for top with the police department. And I reached out to Wonder Fund, which is an organization through DCF. And Wonder Fund has allowed us to see if we can make 40 to 50 children happy this year for the holidays, specific children. We get the names, we work with them. And when I was speaking to the woman from Wonder Fund, she also said that we could be, have a connection with DCF and the, uh, social services there to help families, um, grow and get them things and our, we can just make that type of connection. So I'm hoping that also helps spread a little bit of maybe more information about different agencies in town. Last one is the, and it's not, I know it's not Cohasset, it's Situate, uh, Situate Animal Shelter. I'd like to have the students start to think about, um, their environment around them and how we can help the animal shelter. So we're starting with the high school and we're ending with animals.
Full circle.
Yeah, exactly. We don't leave anybody out. That is my, oh, the last piece on the last page, page 10. The Osgood faculty senate and the Osgood social committee, which is new this year, will work together to build opportunities for students, families and staff to include more planned community involvement in our schools. The main goal for this is to have many people learn from and help to support our students. I don't know if you would like me to back up someplace? Um, questions?
Thank you, Principal Farrell. Mr. Cleary, do you have any questions regarding the school improvement plan? Do you have a question to tell?
I don't. You're going to be so annoyed. I just want to make some comments and take some time to just tell how much I love this plan. I'm so excited. I too am deeply, deeply excited about smart goal number three. I think it's amazing.
I have a TV commercial for it and everything. It's fantastic.
I, it's just so great. I mean, it's community. That's what we are. We're a community and, and I think it's just so wonderful that that is an emphasis in your school improvement plan. I love it.
Back to the, the district plan that we all worked on and, um, just talking about how important it is to be part of the community.
Okay. And I like that you're, you're not, um, I mean, I wouldn't expect anything different, but I just feel like I'm, I'm happy that you've established a goal that's not just seemingly ambitious, but it's also realistic for the I-ready improvement. I think that that's great. And I just really like, I just love, I love the community. I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary.
No, I, I'll echo that. I think this is a great plan. And I particularly love, uh, that on goal one, you've given yourself an objective measurement of success. I think that's often you see plans like this and you don't have that objective measure of success. And I think that's a, a good challenge and I, I have every confidence that, uh, that you will make as much progress as you can to achieve that. So that's, that's fantastic. And I love that you started with the acting, math, teaching literacy, because the school, it's really the core mission, so let's, let's not lose sight of that as well. On goal two, um, where we, we have responsive classrooms, is there a measure of success for that? I mean, I, I know my own, um, my own, um, students, children, they are children. They, they, they very well know the zones, um, better than I do. And so I know it's working well for, for them, but do you have a, a measure of success to make sure that, that, that works in the same way?
The amount of, um, I don't want to call them calls to the office, but the amount of inquiries I get, can you come help? This is, um, I started counting in September. I'd like to see by May, those inquiries are, if not lower, different. Because an inquiry might be, again, I mentioned about recess. Recess is difficult for a lot of children. So the beginning of the year, it's, you can't go over and take the ball from somebody. That will change as the year goes on, then it goes into, um, kind of vicious games of basketball. So it's, I think the overall outcome will be less communications to the office, but they might be different each time. So that's why I'm hoping they will just kind of go down a little bit.
That's great. And I, I share Ms. Cleary's enthusiasm about goal number three. I think it is so important to keep this school as a part of the, as part of the community. So, um, thank you for this. One last question. Do you feel like you have the resources you need at hand to, to move forward on these goals and accomplishments?
Funny you should ask. No, I don't. I, um, I definitely have talked to Dr. Sullivan about a couple of the, um, ideas that are in the making. I definitely think that we have the resources. The resource that is probably the most scarce right now is enthusiasm and we'll get there. It's just, you know, everybody is a little gun shy and I don't mean within the schools. I just mean, I want to make my phone calls outside and ask people if we can join, join the community. People are a little shy right now, but you can't throw us away.
Well, if there's anything we can do as a committee to help you achieve your goals here, please reach out to us and Dr. Sullivan and we can make that happen.
Thank you.
Mr. Darn, Mr. Kearney?
I'm just joy and just, this is just, uh, awesome. You know, I think about Osgood, I just, I'm so overwhelmed on how my kids are doing because of that school, because they teach them that a book, you don't throw a book, you look at a book. And my kids never throw a book. Yeah, it's just little things like that, like they love to, you know, they, they, they got that, um, they got that one-on-one. And we were talking about it last night at the school facilities committee, how important it is to have kindergarten to second grade and third grade to fifth grade. And now we have the middle school and, and what it is and, and seeing those kids help each other, kids help, because, you know, let's face it, a kindergarten to a fifth grader, it's, it's, it's uncomfortable. But this is, we're so lucky to have such a good community of, of, of teachers and, and it's just, yeah, it's the staff and, and, and not only that, but, uh, you know, I, I see here that you're making it into a whole community event because let's get everybody involved, you know? We, we talked about it takes a village, you know? And, and this is really what, what makes me happy and proud to be in this town and you're part of it and thank you.
Thank you.
Great. Mr. Kearney, Mr. St. Anne?
Um, thank you. This is a very well-balanced plan. I think there's targeting all of these areas and we're going to have just, we're really working on the whole child. One little grammatical thing on goal two. Doing a sandwich here. Compliment first. Goal number two, I'm wondering if, where it says promoting equitable opportunities for comma and emotional, and social emotional wellness of comma, our students.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other than that, I just think, um, I think these are great. I'm really excited, you know, now that we have our, our first I-ready measure to be able to grow from there and to be able to have that is something that's consistent throughout the grade levels, starting with our littlest kiddos. Also knowing that there's a dedicated reading specialist with kindergarten, there's someone else who's working with kindergarten and whoa, there's a lot to do right now with our littlest friends. But thank you. Thank you for all you do. I'm really excited to see how especially these community projects progress. And I think that, you know, even though people are feeling nervous and cautious, luckily we have all these digital options to, to reach out and connect virtually, um, and, you know, get some senior citizens psyched about seeing some little kiddos doing, in this case, cute, not being a hopefully frustrating term because they're just so deliciously cute. But I'm, I'm excited to see how this all goes. Thank you.
I did want to mention, um, I wanted to thank Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Scollins and the school committee. I had the opportunity today to go, well, actually the last two days, to go to Wakefield, which I got to tell you is not right up the street. Went to Wakefield for dyslexia conference, both days with two reading specialists, one from Deer Hill and one from Osgood. So thank you for the opportunity. It was fantastic. A lot of things I'm ready to bring back.
Great. Well, Principal Farrell, um, I, uh, I, I feel like I'm fortunate enough to, um, get to see you in action, um, you know, in your building, doing your job, uh, more than maybe the average parent. So I know how much you love your job and how much the students love you and how absolutely lucky we are to have you, uh, here in Cohasset Public Schools. So I have no doubt that you will successfully implement this wonderful plan that you just presented. Thank you so much for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And thank you for letting me go first.
Thank you, uh, Principal Farrell, for all you do and for the wonderful presentation and the work you and your team did. Important to remember that these are team efforts and that's the wonderful thing about a school council is it's a whole community coming together to make sure that the, uh, the goals are met and the goals are expressive of what we all want, which is.
The ownership there, which is huge.
Most of us do. So thank you for everything you do always.
Then Principal Farrell, I think I've been derelict in my appearances at the, I don't think I realized that I stayed with the Osgood, um, liaison position. So make sure you, um, you know, um, get me in a line there if I'm not showing up. I don't know when the last one was.
I adopted you. I don't know.
Okay. That's fine. Just tell me what, I'll, I'll come, I'll come. I just, I just.
I haven't adopted, yes.
Yeah, so, uh, that's okay.
That's, shall I remember it?
That's fine. Just let me.
But we'll have a new plan in the spring, so.
I'm wondering where the heck I am, but I, I didn't, I don't think I realized I was supposed to, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Farrell. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Should mention update 21 to 12 with just a few minutes left.
And we're on the one yard line.
We're on the one yard line. Great. There can't be more than five, six minutes left, right?
Yes, I think you're right.
So we're looking good for Cohasset, uh, football. So wonderful. Okay, I can carry on. So I will, again, Principal Sullivan was not able to be here and did not know, she was not gonna be here in time to, for us to have someone else present. But I do have Mrs. St. Anne here.
Oh, yes.
On the, on the team. But I will share the, um, look at it. You're gonna see some.
So Mrs. St. Anne will be able to present the school improvement plan?
Would you like to present?
I'm happy to read it.
I think that'd be lovely.
Oh, I was just fooling. I was trying to make her nervous.
Nothing makes me nervous.
I see.
Mrs. St. Anne, do you actually show up as liaison today to the council meeting?
I do. I had missed the most recent one because we were touring the facilities, but I have been at all the other ones. Oh, we just got a touchdown also.
I'll mention from just an overarching standpoint, you're gonna see both format and substantive similarities.
Yeah, I know. I love it.
The consistency.
Hopefully that's a hallmark of everything you see going forward.
Right. And, you know, you see that even with like direct department as far as like when you're talking about basketball earlier and everybody has the same uniforms as the high school kids. So you're wearing the way uniforms that are the same as the Cohasset high school. I think that's, I think that's great how we do that.
Same idea. So I will let you take it away.
Sure. I mean, should we just?
Yeah, we can go to the.
Right to the goals because it is a shared template.
Right, highlighting the same things here. And we do have, you know, the numbers here.
Oh, yes.
We do have to look at the larger classes coming from Osgood as this sweeps up into the Deer Hill.
And so as we do that, can I editorially add a question? You know, Mrs. Farrell was talking about, okay, now we have six teachers in kindergarten and six in first, five in second currently, right? I know that we have, we added a teacher at Deer Hill recently. And so I guess I just wanna make sure we're all actively looking at that, right?
So you will see as we meet and talk about our budget needs and we present it to you that we are thinking about as those classes move up the ladder, how we're gonna facilitate that. So you're gonna see, those are positions that we'll be looking at.
I don't doubt that you're thinking about it because you all have great foresight. It's just nice to have that as a plan ahead of time instead of a responsive action.
Yes. And once in a while, you'll get a class that is unexpectedly large. Like I think I speak for Principal Farrell, one is he was a little surprised at the kindergarten.
Yeah.
So that's a great thing. We want people coming, but we love that. But we weren't really projecting.
Some people, like maybe me, were like saving up kindergarten from last year and.
Well, it is a large, large task. Anyway, I'll keep moving.
Do you want me to read the numbers?
Um, no, I mean, if you'd like to. I mean, I think you can see the.
Something we need to do. They're on the table. I mean, they're on the.
Can I, can I just make a point? In this, I just wanna go back to what Lisa Farrell was saying about like, the children's kinda like, they're not used to being around other kids, their siblings and stuff. And I just wanna, like, when we identify the grade numbers now, it kinda seems to me that each kid kinda has two years behind, like, you know what I mean? When we're looking at fourth grade, it's really like we should be focused on that. They really didn't have a third and fourth. Like, it's almost like there's a, there's a gap of two years on every grade. I mean, it's not gonna affect the kids who are already graduated because they're onto college. But I think you're starting, you're starting to see that. Like, I compare that, and I don't wanna get off topic, but I want, I just wanna make sure that we understand her point. Because like, you see it with basketball, and I don't wanna compare everything to basketball, but I usually do.
But less.
But less. I mean, we only had six girls sign up for basketball as opposed to thirty boys. So like, that's eighth grade basketball. So, so what happened was is the sixth grade, they didn't get enough playtime or have their encouragement enough that only six girls came ahead. So my point is, is that we gotta understand that there's a gap there from the sixth grade to the eighth grade on the whole development of like where they were. So some of our kids are still stuck in a grade and haven't moved on. I don't know if you guys see all that, but I just kinda wanted to put that out.
Just to mention, that's very much a part of conversation at schools among teachers and educators everywhere.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, that's ongoing. Literally met about it at seven-thirty this morning.
And we are as well. And we appreciate that, that gap that we have to fill. And there's a, it's both social, emotional, and there's some academics there too.
Just relearning those.
Yeah. I mean, I think we weathered some things well, but it doesn't mean that it's, it's been a tough couple of years.
Yeah, some kids didn't get like an orientation in sixth grade to the new school. So they don't even know where their locker versus. So I'm just trying to, like, I just wanted us to kinda focus on.
I am thankful though, when we hit those types of scenarios, that we do have a K-two school and a three-to-five school, a separate now autonomous middle school. Because you do have the ability to build that a little more succinctly within an age group as opposed to being spread out over, you know, a five-grade level, elementary or even more difficult, the six-to-twelve middle, high school. I'm thankful of that. Certainly wasn't why we designed it, you know, in thinking we were gonna. But it's nice to know that we have those smaller communities. And really what we added was the middle school. It's just such a different community.
So let's.
So moving on.
Very exciting that Mrs. St. Anne is acting as Principal Sullivan. Let's stay the course and get to the presentation and then we can all go around and talk about it.
You go to the goals?
Yeah, I just, I mean, she did include MCAS data, which we've spoken to a little bit this year already. So I think we've had that conversation. Goal number one, during the 2021-2022 school year, Deer Hill School will develop and communicate a minimum of four practices that align curriculum, assessment, grading, and feedback with the new elementary progress report. So obviously, Dr. Scollins just spoke to that update and Dr. Sullivan, I mean, not Dr. Sullivan, Principal Sullivan, so my Sullivan. I feel like you're so good at being right up with all of these developments and what's going on. This is really a full-school effort. As you can see, the responsible parties are many, from Dr. Scollins down to principals and the district MTSS team, Deer Hill to MTSS team and Deer Hill faculty. So I think that also speaks to what Mrs. Sarwaka has been really working on, is that kind of that transparency, that communication, and really making sure that we have that consistency through, through all of our educational practices to make sure that, that the standards are being targeted and all kids are, are able to work towards them. Our success measures here are curriculum, climate survey, teacher feedback from PD offerings, our MTSS data, and our communication tools. Do you want me to read the action plan as well, or?
It's very similar to some of the action plans for Principal Farrell. It's revolved around professional development, connecting with families to make sure they understand curriculum and assessment. And really benchmarking and communicating to families that appropriate data. That is clearly something that we've identified as us wanting to, to, to work better at. And this is a good level to do it as well. So I'd like to see, I like that that's explicitly in the plan.
Yeah, and I think that's, you know, it's nice that we're not, we're hearing that desire from families and they value education. They value this data. And now there is a, a goal in place to speak, to speak to that.
It's also a good time for me to mention that because we have a new strategic plan, you may see some of these goals doubling and have a couple of years on them. You know, it's tough to have more than two years on a goal, but the benchmarks will be very different and the key actions, because you wanna see growth in it. But I just wanna get, you sort of clued in on this, is it won't be very long until you see the new plan. And if you do see some of these goals carrying over into next year, that's actually intentional. And this might be one of them.
We're working on it. SMART Goal Number Two, during the 2021-2022 school year, Deer Hill will develop and implement a minimum of four practices that foster family and communication engagement, community engagement, sorry. So the, this really brings in a bunch of our organizations that already help support the school so much, not only the principal, but the, we have the PAC, the PSO, and math and reading specialists. So this is, again, looking in a broad, kind of a broad lens at making sure that we're including on this, working on this family and community engagement. We will be developing and implementing a program to use parent volunteers building-wide. It's so nice to be able to have that again. Collaborate with the PSO, who does such an amazing job with all of so many events for our schools. Organize a family outdoor yoga event. I know that in-school yoga has been such a hit. So nice to expand that into family yoga. Develop a plan to include families in the fifth grade send-off through a family picnic. So just kind of like letting that tradition evolve and make sure it becomes, you know, I think those send-offs are so important to us and to be able to circle back to that and collaborate with the PSO in the planning of district-wide spring event for families. SMART Goal Number Three, the 2021-22 school year, Deer Hill School will promote an inclusive, socially-aware, and culturally-responsive school community. Implementation of at least four practices to include professional development, curriculum, building initiatives, and social emotional supports. Again, I just, I think that having these, kind of this wide range of responsible parties is just, it's really nice and shows how this is really a community-building goal as well. We'll incorporate curriculum at each grade level that represents a variety of perspectives, experiences, cultures, and identities. And I think we've seen that happening already and now we'll be building upon that. Implement professional development on culturally-responsive teaching, diversity, and inclusion that underscores the belief that all students are our students. Develop collaborative partnerships, CHS, Metco, Safe Harbor, et cetera, to promote an inclusive school community within the larger community. Utilize the PAC as a think tank for ways to promote an inclusive school community within the large community.
The PAC, just so everyone knows, is the Principal's Advisory Committee, which she uses as an internal group that really can inform her.
Or principal.
Yes.
What is the, what is the composition of that?
I think it's, it's her, it's staff members. It's not, Principal's Advisory Committee isn't, I don't believe it's parents. It's just staff members.
I think it is just, I think it's staff, yeah.
Yeah, that was my question.
Yeah, I believe it's staff.
Yep. And they need, and basically advise her on happening as a student in the school.
Implement school-wide community service projects and programming that support socially-aware and inclusive practices. Incorporate culturally-responsive teaching and diversity and inclusion practices into staff meetings, PAC and school council agendas. Provide opportunities for teachers to complete responsive classroom training. I know just the, with the including things on the school council agendas, we talked about that recently and it was like issues were coming up, families wanted to talk about things and they were wondering, should we do something separately? And she thought, no, I really wanna draw this into the school council agenda and hopefully, you know, get some family participation. I think so often we have our meetings and there is not, you know, one in attendance. So to be able to bring kind of like, you know, things that people are interested in into that agenda is, is an attempt to include more, more voice in those meetings.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much, Mrs. St. Anne.
Twenty-seven to twelve, Super Bowl champs. Do the comments, write in the comments.
So does anyone have any questions or discussion points related to the school improvement plan for Deer Hill? Mr. Cleary, do you have any?
I do not. Thank you very much for all of your work. I think it's a great plan. Yeah, I think it hits all the important points in meaningful ways. So thank you.
Mr. Dial, do you have any questions for Mrs. St. Anne or Dr. Sullivan?
No questions. I like, it's focused on academics. I like that it's community. I like, I love to see the strategic plan filtering into the schools. It's fantastic. So please carry on. Our thanks to Principal Sullivan as well.
Thank you. Mr. Dial, Mr. Kearney, Kearney, do you have any?
Uh, no comment. I have no questions. Just a comment. I think this is great.
Okay, thank you. I imagine you have any questions for yourself, Mrs. St. Anne?
Not today.
I don't have any questions, but that was quite a great presentation. And I feel like if I had a dry erase marker, I would just cross my name up and put her.
No need, sir.
People are really being very efficient.
Being a subcar secretary.
And I should add that our next school meeting, you'll have Principal Mills and Scott. Great. And it also is our arts spotlight at the middle and high school. So you'll see, you'll see that. It'll kinda tie in.
That's awesome. Very exciting.
All right. Well, thank you, Dr. Sullivan. Does that conclude your superintendent's report?
I don't know. I do, yes, it does.
Thank you very much. And that brings us to our next section of the, the next section of our agenda is the Student Services Update, brought to you by our very own Director of Student Services, Mrs. Barbara Schrock.
Hi, everyone. So a couple of updates for tonight. What I'd like to do is I'd like to continue to share some of the regular data that I've been sharing with you throughout these meetings and that I will continue to do so. And then tell you about some of the happenings that we have had and some of the upcoming things that we have going on. So I know that Dr. Sullivan is going to put something up on the screen for me regarding our meetings. But while he is doing that, I wanted to open, like I did last month, with our parent feedback surveys. So with every IEP, out goes a parent survey. And we have been getting a good number back in this month since we last met and talked about this. I have to tell you, all of the ones that we got back within this month's time were 100% positive.
Nice.
Which was very nice. As I indicated before, you know, whenever anything is less than positive, we really take it as a learning lesson. But we're very happy that we've gotten positive feedback throughout this month. Out of all of those, fully half of them, 50% of them, 100% strongly agreed with everything. Of the, of those, the next category down is that people agree, which was 17% felt solidly within the agree range for all of the questions that we asked around their understanding, their involvement, their feedback, so on and so forth. And then the remaining amount, the 33% left, were mixed between strongly agree and agree. So that's what the surveys looked like, you know, over the past month since we've last met. And it's, it's interesting that.
Between strongly disagree and agree?
No, between strongly agree and agree, because all of them were 100% positive. Then that breakdown fell between strongly agree and agree.
So I have, I have the data up there now?
Oh, good. Thank you. So if we could go to November. So there we are for this month. What this data shows you is it shows you that we have had a total number within the Department of Special Education of forty-one meetings between the elementary and the secondary this month. If you look, you can see there were a total of seven initial evaluations. All of those initial evaluations were parent sourced, which means that parents contacted us with concerns that we responded to. At the elementary level, three of them were found eligible. Two of them were found not eligible for special education services. And at the middle, high school level, there were two initial evaluations that also students were not found eligible or needing any special education services. Letters come across my desk when students, well, IEPs come across my desk when students qualify. The N2 letters come across my desk when students are not eligible for services. And those letters strongly indicated that parents were very pleased with all of the test results that had gone on, really understood the process, and were satisfied with some alternate supports that their students might be receiving. As far as reevaluations, every three years, a student who is on an IEP is up for a reevaluation. You can see that across the month, we've had nine reevaluation meetings. Out of those, three of those at the elementary level, students continue to be eligible for. Five of those at the middle, high school level, students continue to be eligible for special education services. One elementary case, that student no longer was found needing special education services and came off an IEP, which is always a celebration. We reviewed one independent evaluation at the elementary level so far. And as far as annual review meetings, those ongoing meetings that we have in between the initial and reevaluation years, we held twenty-four of them this, this month, thirteen of them at the elementary level and eleven at the secondary level. So that's been some of the very busy work of our team chairs and our special education staff in terms of their meetings across the month of November. It was. Does anyone have any questions about that particular data point?
Don't, but thank you for sharing that data.
Mrs. Sarwaka, when the students are reevaluated and it's determined that a student is no longer eligible for an IEP.
Yes.
Is the family usually and or always in agreement with that decision?
Usually and or always, yes. They are a very important part of the team process. And all along, families and students are aware of the progress that their children are making. And especially if it is looking at something like there's going to be a change when a reevaluation meeting comes along, they're always apprised of that well in advance. And it is a cause for some. they're always apprised of that well in advance, and it is a cause for some celebration that the child, you know, certainly has learned to strategize and compensate for their areas of vulnerability and disability to the point to which they can do that independently, and they can incorporate those strategies on their own, and they are able to move on. And so, yes, my answer to that in short would be yes.
Right, of course, okay, yeah. And for, and some students, of course, you know, that, it's, it's very difficult, if not impossible, for them to develop those strategies on their own, and so only some students will be able to do that. And, and obviously, it is a cause of celebration there, but, you know, we also recognize that that's, that's not a possible celebration, celebration for many people.
But the progress that they make...
Right.
Always is.
Right, right.
Is it a part of the practice if some, if a child is moving off of an IEP, is there often a D cap put in place just so that that information continues to be communicated, and, and teachers here don't have to relearn what the child was using for strategies and has become independent on, but to keep an eye out?
So, yes, we always, you know, it has always gone over what the accommodations and those accommodations that can be utilized in the general education curriculum that are specific to that child and helpful to that child.
And so that carries on.
And so that can carry on. So a few of the other things that we have been working on and that we have done over the summer and at the very beginning part of the school year, and this kind of goes to the, the student services, I guess, aspect of my role, if you will, when I, I look, you know, beyond kind of special education into student services. Murphy Lemire and Murphy is the, the legal counsel for special education, and Paige Tobin came and did a training with our principals and guidance counselors and school adjustment counselors. She actually did two trainings on 504s. The processes, kind of the updates, you know, kind of refreshing everyone in terms of, you know, not just 504s in general, but 504s as laws have changed, and also 504s as we are hopefully coming out of, but still a little bit in this world of COVID. And it was actually an excellent training. The principals really very much wanted it shared with the stakeholders in their buildings who really oversee 504s. We did a second training that included, as I said, the guidance counselors, the school adjustment counselors, some of the assistant principals came again to the second training because it was just such positive training. And then we, I gathered from the principals, and we gathered up all of the materials that they were using for 504s and forwarded them to the Murphy Lemire and Murphy office. They reviewed them, updated our 504 practices and all of our forms, and added some more into us and sent back to us a 504 binder. So there is a new 504 binder in every school building and that the guidance counselors are aware of, the administrators are aware of, they are sharing, you know, with their staff and can make copies of it as they need to, but it is just kind of the mark of both updating and the consistency between buildings, that the same binder exists in just as good as it would at the high school, and that all of those practices and procedures and forms are really standardized and used across the district. And that was just, I think, you know, really a very beneficial thing for everyone, and everyone felt very good about the training and very solid and knowledgeable in the way they were moving forward, and there's all of the forms and templates and processes in there for everyone to use. So that was really a wonderful thing. We've continued to have CPAC meetings, and in our last two CPAC meetings, in September, Kathy Breeney, elementary team chair presenter, or maybe it was October, presented, and this past month, Michael Stapleton, the secondary team chair, presented and talked about special education programs and services at the elementary and secondary levels respectively, and both presented slide shows that have since been shared with the CPAC president and also on my website, my school website, the slide shows are available for everyone to see. And those are really very nice presentations. A lot of, you know, questions were entertained, a lot of discussion went on, and it was, it was very positively received. And like I said, both of those slide shows are up on my website as well as shared with CPAC to share those out. So that was a really great experience. In this month, the school psychologists are going to come to the CPAC meeting, and they're going to talk about evaluation, assessment, and all three of them are coming, the elementary, the middle school, and the high school. School psychologists are coming, and so that should prove to be a very good meeting as well. Next week, we are holding interviews for the full-time social worker position, so we have a nice team of interviewees for that, as well as those of us who will be conducting those interviews, and those are all set up for next week, so we're very excited to be moving forward with that. I have been gathering information because during last year and the COVID shutdown, I was aware that I had three staff members who were kind of in the middle of a Wilson training, the Wilson reading program, some of whom were able to continue on with that and some of whom needed to put that on hold. But with that in mind, I've sent out some information gathering for all of my staff to see where they are at with that training, who has it, who continues to need it, those people who were kind of caught in that COVID training, where are they at and where do they need to progress with it, and what is everyone interested in, and how can we continue to grow and develop reading in all of the ways that we are developing literacy across our district? So that is something that I'm gathering information on this year and making some plans for, for the continued growth and development of our teachers in that. And I went last month to conduct the high school staff meeting with Assistant Principal Tara Noe, and MTSS was a big focus of that staff meeting, which was why I partnered with her, and did a presentation to the high school staff on that. It was very well received, and a referral to or to to MTSS came out of that meeting. And I am looking to join the middle school staff this month in that faculty meeting on MTSS as well. So we will continue to work across the district on that. And then I think the last thing that I have is I, I spoke at our last meeting about therapeutic programming, and I actually grew kind of like our tiered focus monitoring progress, process, had reached out to do a self-assessment with some former special ed directors who now, you know, this is what they do as consultants, is, you know, come in, do observations of programs, consult in terms of, you know, self-assessment for the district and programming and things like that. And I've contracted with them, they just sent me the contract today, for them to very closely look at and help us develop in our therapeutic programming, using some of our grant funds to go ahead and, and do that with them. So I'm very excited about that and about their input and, and what will be ultimate benefit for us in continuing to develop our in-district programming for students. So that was a lot, but does anyone have any comments or questions about anything that we've been doing in the Office of Student Services?
Mrs. Kaleri?
Thank you for your presentation. I feel like, so one of the things that really caught my attention was the sort of vertical alignment of the materials that are in each building, and it made me, I just, this is not specific to your presentation, so I apologize for that, but I feel like I need to take this moment to say that Mr. Kearney's very astute observation about the basketball situation and about how we, as a community, have had to sort of like do damage control for a year and a half, I feel like today's presentations of our school improvement plans and how aligned they are, and your presentation about the alignment of materials in the buildings and sort of assessment of where the staff is with their trainings, and I feel like this is like, this is where we would have been at the beginning of last year if we didn't have to deal with all that we had to deal with. And so I just, I just feel like I need to say that because I feel like it's true, and I just wanted to go on record as saying I remain very grateful for our leadership team and the work that you're all doing to, to bring this district to where it's, I, I just am so grateful. So, so specifically about your presentation, I too am grateful for the work that you're doing in the Student Services Department, and I feel like I'm very excited about the possibility of developing some, some new opportunities for Cohasset families and maybe even, who knows, families from surrounding towns, possibly, to be able to, you know, grow and develop here in Cohasset Public Schools. So thank you for your work on that. I think it's, it's a lot, I, you know, to sort of get your arms around what is here, get your arms around what has to happen day to day, and to also create the pipeline for what will be, I, and so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Dial?
I also appreciate all that you're doing, and thank you for your fulsome presentation, and I'll just echo Ms. Kaleri's comments to save us all time, but I feel the same way.
And Mr. Dial, Mr. Kearney?
Yeah, I just love the surveys. I think that's a really good idea to get, keep transparency and keep asking, hey, how can we help? And I love, I love that idea, and yeah, that's great.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. Onge?
I just want to clarify, with your Wilson training kind of survey or putting your feelers out, is that, did you send that out to special ed staff exclusively or to all staff?
I sent it out to special ed staff exclusively at this point in time, but I am going to partner with Dr. Scholins and talk to her about it in the larger picture of literacy and our reading specialists and our general education teachers.
Yeah, I just think as we're taking a structured approach to literacy from the bottom up, and then we're trying to improve our tier one instruction...
Yes.
The more people, of course, foundations is, is a Wilson program, and, and I think that our training on that is pretty comprehensive and is going very well at the elementary level, but I think, you know, if there's an interest in that, or I think a lot of us as teachers are kind of still in a place where we're not ready to take a course, maybe, because there's a lot happening. But I think just planting that seed is, okay, now you're a little more comfortable with foundations, you could become certified in this, and just all of our students would benefit from that. So I'm just, I think as, as broadening that awareness is so important.
It is, and, and I think there's a great deal of value in being trained in Wilson.
Agreed.
And then I think the certification is kind of another layer to it, but even just, even just the training in Wilson in another sense.
And having that consistency of language across the grades and being, and having that translate to families, and we all know how to speak the same language so we can help our kids make more consistent progress. It just makes a difference. Another thing I was wondering about, as Mrs. Kaleri said, perhaps helping other families from other towns, as we develop our therapeutic program, might we become a destination for other towns out, out-of-district placements? Like, is that something that could happen?
It is a possibility, it absolutely is.
Yeah, yeah, just good to know. I think like we can foster that program and keep our kids here and maybe help other kids.
Help other kids in other towns as well, sure.
That's all I have. Thank you so much.
All right.
There are out-of-district placements for therapeutic programming, and I feel like you alluded to this, or maybe expressed stated, I just sort of want to reiterate it in your presentation, that the 1.0 social worker that we're now interviewing for is a step towards providing those therapeutic programs, or therapeutic programming in our own district, and you're taking similar steps for vocational instruction, another word for it, and I can't remember what it is, but, you know, vocational instruction for students that are placed out of district for that type of vocational instruction. I, I forget, you are, you're, you're making progress in that area as well, first steps, initial steps.
Right.
And I think by those two initiatives combined, eventually, we can realize a real savings because, as we all know, one of the major budget draws are out-of-district placements, which is, is what it is. If, if we need to do that, that's, that's when we need to make those expenditures, that's, that's obviously money well spent, but if we can work it into our own district's offerings, that's even better for obviously a litany of reasons not to mention the fact that we don't need to send our own community members outside of our district in order to get that instruction. So just want to commend you.
In our community.
Right. Right, so I want to commend you on, you know, recognizing and obviously taking initial steps, and it's, it's not, it's a, it's a slow burn, but, but nevertheless, these are important first steps, and obviously, we need the right person in your position to recognize that and to make those changes, so thank you. Okay, thank you so much, Mrs. Sroka. Does that conclude the student services report?
That's...
Okay.
Maybe I could let Sue and Barbara go if you want Sue to hang on for this next part.
Well, definitely, Mrs. Sroka, I think, can leave. Unfortunately, I've just...
I think there might be some items...
You never know. I want to let Mrs. Owen go because I feel bad, but I just never know. I mean, that's, you know, it's, heavy is the head that wears the crown, you know?
She'll be fine. She could be mad at you now, don't she?
I know, I know, so...
No, makes sense. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you.
It's not gonna, honestly, it won't cost you too much time anyway, Mrs. Owen, because I, I don't think we'll be much too much longer, but...
Just another couple hours.
Especially if you have Mrs. St. Onge present again or something, we'll be right out of here in a very efficient manner.
Bada bing bada boom.
School, school committee section of the agenda, school facilities committee report. Just quickly, we just met last night, and Mr. Kearney can add to this if he feels he needs to, but very basically, Dr. Sullivan presented, and it was decided that we would move forward with an request for services for design, for a, for a, an assessment of our current facilities, for a outside entity to come in, assess the condition of outside, inside, various infrastructure and mechanical needs within all buildings, not just the middle-high school, which is an important first step or an important component to ultimately submitting an SOI, a state of interest to the MSBA's core program, to participate in perhaps looking at getting new school buildings. So that was a pretty significant development and movement and step in the right direction in that, that's, that's being actually posted, I think, on 12/8, so there's a timeline there, it'll be advertised, bids will be accepted, we'll take interviews...
The big...
And then that process will begin, they need, it's about, I think they said, I think six weeks, it might be three weeks, for them to actually con, conduct the assessment and then provide us a report, which again will be used in, in producing or composing our SOI, which will be done in conjunction with the Superintendent of Schools and the Director of Finance and Operations, and we are trying to meet an April 29 deadline there. So a lot of the SOI will be done in parallel to the, the RFS that we just sent out to bid, and then by our powers combined, during that time, we should make that, that deadline. There are other entities that will, town entities that need to be brought into the fold, obviously during this, capital budget, and, and Christine Year's office, and our procurement officer, Michelle Leary, has, is, is been involved in every step of the way, so they'll, they'll be involved as well. No decisions have been made yet, it's just that the decision has been made to further explore this, which is exciting and a positive step in the right direction. That's where, I don't know, Mr. Kearney, if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I would say that it's, it's great to be a part of that committee. I think it's really proactive and, and moving really quickly, and quite frankly, it's, it's really a lot of smart people in that, that want to, that are committed to, I mean, they did the walkthrough for the Harvard School and had some concerns, and I just, I'm glad to be a part of it. It's just, it's, it's definitely a positive step forward every day, and I just love the fact that everybody's on board. It's, it just seems that way, that everybody wants to get it done, and if we could do it tomorrow, we would, I would say.
After going through the legal process of the RFC?
Right, no, and, and, and like I was saying, the, the folks that are in charge of all that, that this isn't their first go-around, they, which I was pretty impressed with, like, you got to look out for this, you got to look out for that, there was some really good questions. It was great. It was great.
So, yeah, there'll be, there'll be, this is a community decision and we're going to start some messaging there just to make the entire community aware. I don't know how many people are seeing this, but you're going to start to spend a whole messaging like we do with the school committee. So people are aware of what that committee is doing, um, because eventually it is certainly a major decision for the community. So, uh, moving on, reports from sub-community liaison positions. Mrs. Caleri?
Our policy and communications subcommittees met. Not a lot to report on the policy front. Communications, we have established some goals. We would like to start making some progress on some of our school committee goals through this, the communications subcommittee, perhaps develop some mechanisms through which we can communicate with members of the community to get them to participate in our directory that we talked about. But first we want to know where the schools, that specifically the faculty and staff would like to be supported. So we're thinking about, that was Mrs. St. Orange's wonderful suggestion. She's a teacher. She's like, well, maybe we should ask the teachers, right?
Yes.
Such an obvious thing that was not so obvious to me. So, thank you. So, so we're working on the mechanisms that we're going to use to communicate those things. And we will, of course, report back to this committee before moving on anything. But we are in the process of trying to coordinate with Lisa Raden. Because obviously most of this stuff will be, um, you know, computer-based and technological in nature. So we want to make sure we're communicating effectively and creating these resources and communication mechanisms in, you know, a sensible way. So we'll report back. Did I forget anything?
I think just in terms of policy, we are on, continuing to work on the wellness policy, which is perhaps in 2024 will be set.
Okay, Mrs. Caleri, is that it?
Yeah.
Mr. Dial, any reports?
Just a brief report that we're kicking off a series of meetings for the, uh, facilities and capital committee, subcommittee to, to continue to address, uh, school lunch issues, to, uh, address miscellaneous, uh, other, um, facilities issues like outdoor lights and, um, general upkeep of grounds and that sort of thing. So, uh, more to come at later meetings.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mr. Kearney, any updates from you?
Yeah, the wellness committee, um, we're going after our goal of afternoon snacks. We sent out a survey. So we have a subcommittee meeting this, uh, week that we're really excited to get this goal going to actually take a, uh, a action plan and put it together. So we're expecting that to be done, um, sometime before the end of the year. So we're really pushing for that. The other thing I would ask Dr. Sullivan is can we get a participation report on, um, exactly what kids are doing what in wellness?
Yes, in terms of, um.
Like what kids are signing up for, like, again, that concern about, you know, I just, you, you do the numbers and you're like six girls signed up for basketball, 30 boys, you know, what?
You mean in terms of arts offerings, sports offerings?
Yeah, because I know.
And you want to split by gender and age?
Yeah.
Okay. And we also have, um.
Like you did before.
We have some pretty comprehensive, uh, after-school management programs going on too.
Okay.
At different levels, which I think would be good for you to, to know about the participation.
Yeah.
And, you know, the, the middle school is just, it's a, it's just a changing world now with all the clubs and everything happening.
Right.
Be nice for you to know about that a little more.
Yeah. And the other thing is if, if the chair would invite the rec department in to kind of come in and.
Yeah, we also have, we have, um, what's it called? A morning program.
Right, right. Yeah. Yeah, I'm, I'm more talking about like pickup basketball, like, um, as much as we can get going. Just what can we do to get, keep the kids going right now? Because like I said, I think, I think the kids have lost a lot of, um, encouragement when it comes to like any activities, kind of. I think we're hearing that, that kids are kind of on the sidelines. So if it's just a quick pickup basketball game, I think that's a thing that we should look at of any kind of wellness. So any kind of participation report, I know, and what I was thrilled about is just, it lays out all the, the options for people to have. I mean, I didn't know that we had so many clubs, math clubs, jazz clubs. I mean, there's so many clubs that.
They're, they're really growing.
Yeah. So next meeting, if we can see that, I think that we can, you know, outline that and let kids know what are they doing? Cause I've had parents call me up and try to still get on my basketball team and they didn't sign up. And I let the kids practice with us and, and I'll see what happens. But it's just, I think it's that like encouragement that kids need to say, hey, sign up for something.
Some diversity. We have a Dungeons and Dragons club. We have some really different clubs that I don't know a lot of people know about.
You know, and, and me personally, I play basketball with a younger and a little bit older, not much. Cause there's none of a, of all that. And it's just, it's, it's that.
It's great.
It's really good. And if it's any kind of club of participation, I think it's. Because like today we're celebrating the Super Bowl kid, football game. Yeah. And that's great. And I think it's wonderful. It's just, we also have got to focus on that kid that's not at the game today. You know, what can we do to get him and find or he, him or her?
Them. You can just say them.
Them. Him, her, them involved. Cause it's, uh, I think it's, it can really make a difference in a kid's life. And even when we say, when we see, um, kids that, guys that I play basketball and we, we always say, hey, we haven't seen you. Everybody's been asking for you. And the next day you'll see him with his gym bag. Hey, they're all asking about me. So just that little encouragement, I think. And I think the participation report will help.
I think that's, that's great. I'd love to do that for you.
Thank you.
We have a, um, community question if we want to take that now?
Yes.
So, um, Kristen Quinn from 219 Sawyer, uh, Asgood has a holiday concert coming up. Does Deer Hill have any plans for this or any plans for a spring play? We're going on three years of no chorus in the Deer Hill. It would be great to see some creative ways to get the kids who were robbed of this when they were in third grade in 2020 to get this back before they graduate to middle school. Smiley face.
Yeah, that's a great question. Actually, um, I haven't had a chance to talk to, uh, Principal Sullivan about this. We did mention, I know there's a plan and, uh, Quinn mentions, um, at Asgood. I, I don't know exactly what the plan is for Deer Hill. So I will, I will find out and report out. And make sure that Principal Sullivan reports that out too. It's a good question. I'm embarrassed I don't know because it was on my list to find out.
Well, maybe we can even, I'm happy to, someone can actually reach out to Mrs. Quinn when we have.
I will. I'll reach out, I'll reach out to her. Yeah.
I'm wondering if just holiday updates could be in the navigator too. Like as, I know that like Principal Farrell sent out the holiday stroll information and it's a little different model this year. But maybe that's just general.
Yeah, yeah, I, I will. And this is a good, um, actual addition to do that. On top of, you know, obviously I've been talking about my, the winter concert at the middle school. But the elementary school plans were still somewhat in development, um, for obvious reasons. You know, because of the, the layout of the school and the war with COVID and all everything. So it, it is a good time for me to reassert that publicly where we are with it and that we are trying to get more engaged. But I will reach out to, um, to Kristen to, to give her that information when I, when I get it, probably tomorrow.
Mrs. Quinn, don't be afraid to reach out if you don't, you know, if we, if we just don't get back to you and we.
I'll get you. But it'll probably tomorrow.
You probably would, no, of course it'll be tomorrow. Of course it'll be tomorrow. But I'm just saying, you know, if, if, you know, if you don't hear anything in a few days, just reach back out and.
Yes.
Ms. Quinn follows up with, thank you so much. Uh, and Ms. Quinn, that is your second comment. So one more. Of course, I'm kidding. Still have two more.
But not really. Okay. Um, I think that concludes all the updates and reports. So there are no minutes to approve.
Not today.
There are no topics. Uh, I was not saying, uh, that we're not reasonably anticipated in 48 hours of this meeting. And, uh, there's no reason I know of to move into executive session tonight. So with that, is there a motion on the floor to adjourn the December 1st, 2021 meeting?
Still moved.
A motion has been made by Mrs. St. Orange. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor? Aye.
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 All opposed. Motion unanimously passes and the meeting is adjourned.
Great.
Great.
Nice job, everyone.
One minute over.